Meeting in order. This is a legally constituted meeting of the Town of Chilai Planning Board. Legal notice of this meeting has been posted in the guides, Chilai News, and in the bulletin board in the front vestibule of the town hall. If you could, please silence your phones and any pages you may have, and please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, and just for all.
In the event of an emergency, please use the exits in the front and the rear of the room. We will proceed in the order of the agenda unless otherwise noted. Please, when called, please proceed to the podium, state your name, and if you're representing an applicant, indicate the applicant's name. Review the details of your application. Planning Board members and side table participants will address questions and concerns to the applicant or their representative. For the public hearing portion of the meeting, upon completion of comments from the board and the side table, anyone wishing to comment on the application will be heard. If you wish to speak, please wait to be recognized by the chairperson, stand and state your name and address for the record. Please speak so that all can hear your comments and address all comments and questions to the chairperson. Now introduce the board members and the side table participants. To my far left is Joe Defendis, Matt Emmons, Al Hallaby, I'm Mike Nyhan, Glenn Hyde, David Cross has been excused, Paul Blozier. Our side table, our planning board council is Matthew Piston. Our building department manager is Paul Wanzinreid, and our town engineer is Michael Hanscom. Our recording secretary tonight is Sandra Hewlett. I am going to take the agenda out of order. I'm going to have the recommendation go first. It's the application of Jack Hill, 77 Chestnut Drive, Rochester, New York, 1462. Applicant owner for a recommendation to rezone the parcel of land from R 115 to NB at the property located at 2675 Chilai Avenue, the R 115 district.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Jack Hill, 77 Chestnut Drive, Chilai Avenue. And as a recommendation, I have a recommendation on the property located at 2675 Chilai Avenue. The building is currently zoned as a R-1-15. And I would like to see if the board would consider rezoning to the neighborhood. I have a couple of reasons behind this. One, the property has been a commercial endeavor since its creation. That dates back to the 1950s. And the parcel does not conform to the R-1-15 district parameters for the area and the dimension. Structure does not, nor has it ever, conformed to the required size for a single-family dwelling as defined by the code of the Town of Chilai. The neighborhood property, 2669 Chilai Ave, is on his neighborhood business, and this property is contiguous to my property, thus would not be considered a Scott zone. The surrounding neighborhood is comprised of a pharmacy, church, group home, park complex. 2669 addresses a dentistry. Plus, there's other small businesses on that road that's in between, that's right between, on Chilai Ave, between Pigs Ave and West Side Drive. There's also a insurance agency in there, and I've just seen advertising that someone goes mail something. So, you know, it's not going to, you know, really help the character of that neighboring environment. And the size of the parcel and the structure really doesn't run itself to high traffic or, you know, intensive uses or traffic counts for the minimum property or parking requirements. So with that said, I'm asking the planning board to take this into consideration.
What's your planned use for the property?
I want to run the property, the individual looking to rent it, looking to make it for event planning and, yes, weddings and afterlife celebrations and that sort of thing.
So they're going to use that as their office to plan events for...
Yeah.
Okay.
It would be less traffic. I mean, as far as like the impact is concerned, what's going to be going on there within that immediate environment for neighboring residences, is there will be significantly less traffic and use as, you know, than it did when it was the Arizona.
Okay. Joe?
No.
No comments.
Great curiosity questions. How all of a sudden did this thing come about? Did you just purchase this property?
I purchased it in October of '22, when I tried getting this rented out at the salon. Also, it wasn't individual, but they tried doing this, that, salon slash barber shop. And he ended up being, it was a bad honeybee.
Well, I know this thing's been in existence for fifty plus years.
Yes, sir.
How long has it been vacated where nobody's actually used this?
Just since I, actually, the individuals that were operating now there, they signed a five-year lease and then put on it to keep it for the next five years. And once I closed and let them know, you know, some of my plans I wanted to do with place, and the parking lot was a shambles, I mean, it was to the point where my fellow guy wasn't even going to follow it anymore because it was just that bad. So I repaid that whole parking lot, and then I just, that was in '23. And then this year here, I ended up getting sealed.
All right. But other than the fact that possibly a new paint job, you don't plan on doing any other things to this building, correct?
No, there was some siding. There was a lot of siding panels from it. There was the picture window, the large window in the front had been cracked in it. And I had the guy next door, he has a glass business, and he changed the glass in it. And I did the, we did the replacement of the furnace for attaching the final siding back on. So everything is looking pretty good. I was happy with it now.
That's all I got.
No questions. Anything from the side table? No questions, okay. So there's no public hearing on this, correct, Paul? And this is just a recommendation to the town board? They'll be taking care of Seeker, so there'll be no Seeker either? So any further discussion from the board on this? I mean, this has been some sort of a small business since I can remember?
It's been there for an eternity, and like I said, I, from what his description or what he wants to do with it, it doesn't sound like it's out of character.
All right, okay. In that case, we'll take a vote on a recommend to recommend or not recommend. So the vote will be to recommend or not recommend the application of Jack Hill, 77 Chestnut Drive, Rochester, New York, 1462. Applicant owner for a recommendation to rezone the parcel from R 115 to NB at the property located at 2675 Chilai Avenue in the R 15 district.
Yes.
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 Elsewhere, yes. So this recommendation will go to the town board. The town board will have a public hearing and hear this, and then, based on their decision, it may or may not come back to us. All right? Thank you. You have a good night. Our next applicant is the application of Roundings Tree LLC, 1657 East Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14610. Applicant Rochester WLLC, 355 Third Avenue, 28th Floor, New York, New York, 10017. Owner for A, a preliminary site plan approval to convert the existing building to a multi-use space, and B, special use permit to allow outdoor seating areas at the property located at 3127 Chilai Avenue, the former Walgreens in the GB District.
Good evening. My name is Peter Bowers with BME Associates, appearing this evening on behalf of Roundings Third LLC. With me this evening from Roundings Third LLC is Matt Lester and Anthony Gizzi. They are the developers, or the redevelopers maybe, of what is the existing Walgreens store that is located at 3127 Chilai Avenue, which is at the southeast corner of the Chilai Avenue-Paul Road intersection. We're here this evening to request preliminary and final site plan approval for the redevelopment of the property or the building, and also a special use permit for outdoor dining at this location. Currently, the property is, it's 3.2 acres. It contains the existing single-story former Walgreens pharmacy. The building size is 14,860 square feet, has access, a full service access onto Chilai Avenue, and then it has a right-in, right-out only access onto Paul Road. The redevelopment of this property really is focused on the building itself. We are not proposing any changes to the access to Chilai Avenue or to Paul Road, or even to what is currently the development footprint of the 3.2 acres. The property is zoned, GB General Business, and the intended redevelopment of this building would comply with the zoning district. What the applicant is proposing to do is repurpose the existing building into a multi-tenant retail and food service use, looking at breaking up that existing 14,000-plus square-foot building, probably to serve five different individual tenants. But it will all occur within the existing building itself. We are, there will be minor facade changes proposed to the building. With the addition of tenants, we'll be adding additional doors and additional windows along the north and west and south sides of the building. In addition to that, there will be additional signage proposed for the building itself. We did meet earlier this evening with the AAC to go over the proposed facade changes, and we believe that meeting went very well. All of the changes that will occur will use the same types of materials and colors. So basically, there's really going to be no dynamic change to the existing building as it appears today, except for what is just necessary to accommodate the additional tenants. There are minor changes proposed to the footprint of the building itself. First of all, there are two loading docks that are located on the east side of the building, which is on the Paul Road side of the building. Those two loading docks will be removed. There is an existing drive-through canopy on the north side of the building, on the Chilai Avenue side of the building. That will be removed. There's no changes proposed to the primary building footprint itself, that gross floor area of 14,860 square feet. So as we said, basically, what you see there today for the building is what you will see post-redevelopment rehab. The site improvements that would be done as part of this redevelopment will be minor, and it really will be within the context of around the building perimeter. There is no proposed expansion to the pavement areas or parking areas. As I mentioned earlier, the development footprint that's there today will remain unchanged. The lot coverage will remain the same. The building coverage, which is 10.6% of the property area, remains unchanged, and the code allows a maximum building coverage of 30%, so we're well within that. Minor site improvements would consist of adding pickup windows. There are, at this time, contemplated two food service operators, and they both would have mobile order pickup windows, one on the east side and possibly one on the north side. As part of that, the pavement areas in those areas will be reconfigured. Basically, we'll be introducing medians, landscape medians, to create the drive-through or pickup window aisles and separate that from bypass and through traffic. And that's all illustrated on the site plans that were provided to you. In addition, as because of, to accommodate the food service operators at the northwest corner of the site and at the southeast corner of the site, we will expand the concrete walks in those areas to create two concrete patios ranging in size of around 675 to 750 square feet. These would be large enough to accommodate up to four outdoor tables or 16 seats, and they would have a decorative fencing, aluminum fencing put around it. That's been detailed on the site plans also. With regards to utilities, the only work that would be necessary is because of the food service operation, a grease trap would be added to the sanitary service lateral, but there are no other changes proposed for utility services to the building because the existing services are adequate. The only pavement work that will be done will be around the perimeter of the building to accommodate the new medians that I've already mentioned that we would be adding, and also for the expansion to create the concrete patio areas. There is no site grading proposed or required with this building redevelopment. We are proposing to revamp the landscaping on the property since the property, Walgreens, left the site. The landscaping has basically become tired and old, so what we're looking at doing is revamping that landscaping. The median areas will be landscaped, and then we're also looking at expanding the landscaping around the existing project sign and also the existing Town of Chilai sign that's located at the corner there. Landscaping would be a mix of shrubs, perennials, and ornamental grasses. We're looking for low-profile plantings, because if you're familiar with the topography of that building, that building sits below Chilai Avenue especially. So we're very reluctant to put anything that will grow of any magnitude because it will be screening the tenants' spaces, and it'd be, and they really rely on visual, being able to be seen as part of their location at that area. So we'd be looking at low-profile plantings in those areas. We are proposing a new dumpster enclosure up at the north end of the site. That dumpster enclosure, and this was discussed with the AAC earlier this evening, would be a masonry structure of materials and colors similar to the existing building. So that tan color you see of the existing building would be the color of the masonry block that would be utilized for the dumpster enclosure. There is no proposed changing to the site lighting, the existing lighting on the property. It's basically around the perimeter of the parking lot. Those pole-mounted lights will remain in place. We did provide lighting information on the photometrics to show that there's no spillage off the site. There may be, there will likely be additional building lighting, because with each new door entry, there will be socket lighting or whatever is required as part of code there to provide lighting. We did discuss with the AAC, any lighting for signage would be addressed with the sign package. Parking on the property, as I mentioned, we're not looking at expanding the existing parking lot. We're going to utilize the existing parking lot. We are looking at providing 67 parking spaces on the property, which will include four ADA accessible spaces. Those spaces will be located at the southwest corner of the property, which is primarily where the main old Walgreens entrance was. We've located them at that corner because that basically allows those ADA spaces to be, parking there, you have an even distribution to all of the potential tenants that would occupy the building, because their primary access points will be along the west side or the south side of the building. With the multiple tenants, we did go through the town code and determined, per the analysis of the code, that 76 spaces would be required. So therefore, what we are going to be requesting from the planning board is an approval for land banking that difference between the 67 spaces that are provided and the 76 code-required spaces. We've land-banked those spaces off the Chilai Avenue entrance, nine spaces total. At 67 spaces, we are providing parking at one space per 207 square feet of net leasable space. The applicant consulting with them, we don't anticipate the need for the total 76 spaces. That's why we look to land-bank nine of them. And this is based on practical need. First of all, multi-tenant parcels like this, you are able typically to apply a shared parking credit. In other words, somebody there may visit more than one of the tenants that are located there. And the Institute of Transportation Engineers say that credit can be anywhere from 15% to 20%, depending on the makeup of those tenants. But we did not apply that in our calculation. Also, pickup window, mobile app windows in the post-COVID world has really reduced the demand on parking as it relates to indoor seating. More people are just going, picking up their food or whatever and leaving the site. So there's been a reduction in demand on parking in that regard. But most importantly, we're using the applicant's operational experience in developing, leasing, and managing similar multi-tenant properties throughout the area. They've been doing this for a number of years now and have learned what is the proper parking ratio. So with that, we're looking at just utilizing the parking we have. We feel comfortable that the amount is adequate for the tenants that will be there. But in the event, if not, we do have the land-bank parking there in order to comply with the code. One thing we also did, we did have a traffic study prepared, even though we don't hit some of the thresholds that the New York State DOT or the Monroe County DOT look at. They use a 100-trip, peak hour trip generation as kind of a trigger for a traffic study. We consulted with both the county and the state and also the works. But in deference to this board, we did have the traffic study completed for your information. That was submitted to you. What that study found, it analyzed the two existing intersection or property access points onto Chilai Avenue and to Paul Road, but it also looked at the Chilai Avenue-Paul Road intersection. What it showed, and let me back up, I'm sorry. It analyzed the morning peak hour and the evening peak hour, which is standard, but it also looked at the midday peak hour between 11:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. What the study showed, though, was with the redevelopment of a multi-tenant building of this sort, including up to two food service operators, was that the levels of service currently at those three intersections, that there'd be no degradation of those levels of service, that they today operate at a satisfactory level of service and will continue to do so in the post-development condition. And as I mentioned, these studies have been, this study has been provided for review, but we believe that the findings of that study are pretty clear, is that there would be no traffic impacts on the redevelopment of this building. As I mentioned, there are two patios proposed for outdoor dining at this, with this rehabilitation, and as such, in the GB zone, that is a special permitted use per Section 519(c)(8) of the code. It's, in the code, it's called an outside or outdoor cafe. So we are requesting the planning board to grant that special use permit to assist in your review or analysis of that. We did provide you a separate document with our application package that went through two sections of the special use permit code, 529n4, which is the review of, I think, seven items as it relates, does the use have an impact on public health, safety, and welfare? And then we looked at Section 500-29o, which was, I think, 12 or 12 or 14 items, that looked at the basic standards of such a use in this area, what had to be reviewed. In preparing that information, we find, in our opinion, that it shows that the outdoor patio use is compatible, is compatible to the area and to the Chilai Avenue corridor. There are other outdoor dining uses within close proximity of this property, and that it would not be a detriment to the neighborhood. We did receive comments from the DRC back in late June, such that on June 26, we did provide supplemental information to our application at the request of the DRC, and that basically involved splitting some drawings up to make them a little bit more clearer, providing landscaping and lighting information. We also received the town engineer's letter dated June 28, and submitted written responses to that yesterday on the 8th of July. Basically, we believe we are comfortable that we'll be able to address all of those comments, such that we believe they can be a condition of hopefully site plan approval that the board would consider this evening. I've mentioned a couple times signage. Given that not all of the tenants are known at this time, we acknowledge that the sign package likely would be a separate application to the Town of Chilai, because once we know all the tenants, then we'll know what the size of the signs may end up being, whether any variances are needed, whether what lighting standards would be required. So we look at keeping that as a separate application because it will be so tenant-driven, but we acknowledge that it is something we would have to come back and do. The final thing I have is, as it relates to Seeker, this, in our opinion, it is a type 2 action per Section 617.52 and 8, because basically Seeker defines this as type 2 when it's a rehabilitation and/or a reuse of an existing commercial building as a permitted use, including specially permitted uses in the zoning district. So we feel we comply with those two components, and thus it would be type 2, a type 2 Seeker action. So with that, myself or the representatives from the developer could answer any questions that you have.
Joe?
The two drive-up windows. You feel that you've got adequate number of spaces in there so you don't end up backing up? I mean, I think of the McDonald's up here that sometimes they're backed up to Chilai Avenue.
We do for a couple of reasons. First of all, the types of users that are being considered are more, they're not a QSR type. It's more of a fast casual type, and what the difference there is, is these are mobile pickup windows. In other words, you know, the person has ordered whatever they've ordered on their mobile app. This just saves them from going inside to pick it up off the shelf. So the point is, the food is prepared and ready, because they get an alert that says it's ready. So it moves a lot quicker. The other thing, though, too, yes, there's always the potential for queues, is because of the site layout of this building and the fact that there's complete four-sided access, which includes complete bypass, that, you know, if there is backup or whatever, there's plenty of room on the site itself for that traffic to stack onsite before it would ever get to either of the public highways.
The dumpster location, I know you don't have any, the dumpster location, you don't have any good spots for it, but...
Right.
It seems awkward to get a truck in there unless you're just going to do totes or something like that?
No, look, first of all, you're right. It was difficult to locate the dumpster enclosure here, because if we're familiar with the property, you know, with Paul Road here, Chilai Avenue here, the grade drops off dynamically here, so there was nothing really we could do off the east side. We wanted to stay away from this area, it's the front yard. So it really kind of left us to this corner here. But we do believe, we looked at the circulation, if they come in off of Paul Road, they can circulate around here, access the dumpster, back out, circulate through. Or if they come through Chilai Avenue, yes, they'd have to loop all the way around. But the point is, to access these, it would be a northbound traffic movement. But that was also the part of keeping that full, you know, 26-foot-wide access around the building to facilitate that movement also.
That's all I've got.
So Peter, you addressed the Chipotle there, but I see with the Panera, and we talked about this at 6 o'clock, too, there, is that a traditional Panera drive-through where I can order at the kiosk?
Yes, so that is a good clarification. Thank you. So if... So if the food service operator that would be located at the north end of the building, I guess, Chilai Avenue side, that would likely have a traditional ordering kiosk. So that would be a two-stop process in that regard. But, so that would be included. The detail on the kiosk would be part of the building permit application, because it'll be a branded, or feature, I guess is maybe the best word.
Yep, okay. And we did talk about that at six o'clock, too, and I just, to say it out loud and get it in the minutes, I think even when McDonald's redid theirs and when Taco Bell did theirs, we did have that submission where we got to see that kiosk. So we're going to want to see what that looks like, just to make sure that there isn't, you know, the opportunity that maybe it is a masonry base, or, you know, depending on the traffic here, like, what does it actually, what does it actually look like? So at some point, I guess to your point is, is it's got to come through somebody to make sure that we see it and know that it's not bright pink and flashing lights.
You know, and we would be able to do that as part of the sign package.
Okay.
Because that, the kiosk and stuff, that's all part of branding.
Yep, agree.
So we are doing whatever we have to do. We know the sign package has to come back.
Yep.
So if there is a kiosk involved, it would be included with that package.
Okay, great. Yeah, and to stay on that for a minute, I guess, to add on to what you said earlier with the AAC, I think, is any other architectural building lighting? You had mentioned the signage, but also any other, if there was any other things that you guys were proposing to do or going to do, it'd be good to make sure we at least see the cut sheets on those. Not that they have to come back to Architectural Advisory Committee, but we did kind of talk about goosenecks potentially. If it's just wall packs, we're still going to want to see some kind of a cut sheet on that.
Yep.
Either if it's the planning board or whatever, right? And like you said, agree with the coming back on signage. Everything else, I think, is great. I would add into one of the things that we talk mostly about, which is where the dormers are being removed and the signage band is coming in. I think as you talk about your signage package and resubmission, we should just make sure, because you guys are going to right-size that, we're going to probably get a little more detail and look at the lights. I think we should just make sure we say that out loud in the minutes, so that that doesn't just go through when we build that and then worry about the signs later.
Right. Yes, we, yeah, we acknowledge and understand that when we talk about signage package, it will be number of signs, total square footage of the signs, and broken down if there's separate sign bands, all of that detailed lettering. What is the proposed lighting and whether it complies with code or not? And at the AAC meeting, the developer said it is their intent to comply with the code.
Yep.
So lighting, but yes, we'll also have the architectural information of how this sign band here will tie into the existing roof. So, and then we'll also have the information on the order kiosk. Point being, we understand it has to be a complete signed pack. When I, when we say signed package, it is a complete package on brand, colors, materials, lighting, architectural detail.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then, just to stay on something else here with the, I guess I'll just say the Panera drive-thru at the north there. So one of the things that I'm seeing here, because I go to the Panera drive-thru in Perrington, is the cross, I hate the fact that they have a crosswalk that comes right across and across that driveline of traffic. As a drive-through person, I don't like that. But it connects the parking lot from the backside. So one of the things I noticed here is, is you have the aluminum fence blocking off, so you don't have people wandering out into that lane. However, we don't have any pedestrian connection from those parking spots on that, you know, drawing north.
Up in here?
Yeah, we don't have any, like, if I park, no one's ever going to park there, because there's no way to get across, and they don't want to walk across that traffic. So I guess my question is, is could we look at some kind of pedestrian connection?
Yeah, because I know, for instance, now, we acknowledge, like, the stop bars here.
Yep.
But let's strike it and sign it.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think it needs to be anything more than that, but.
Sure.
Yeah, and you talked about the masonry on the dumpster enclosure. And you did, you did allude to that, I think, Matt, you had mentioned you have three of the five tenants signed up?
Yep.
And is the, is it the Panera and the Chipotle, or are you not allowed to say yet, or?
Can't confirm.
Could you use your name, please, sir?
Sorry, Matt Lester with Brownie III LLC.
Thank you.
Typically, the potential tenants don't want to, you know, the, the, but.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, and I guess, I guess the reason I'm asking is, I'm trying to understand or gauge the importance of the outdoor seating for both of them. I think it's nice. I think it's a good idea, and I don't, I don't have an issue with it, but I'm just asking, like, if that's something where that's why we're doing it and those are the ones, then it just maybe ties it together for the special use permit, I guess.
Maybe you have a different plan.
Great. That's all I've got right now, Mike. Okay.
And we would point out, though, and we did include the outdoor seating in the parking calculations, okay? So Unit 76, that accounted for thirty-two outdoor seats.
Somewhere in the paperwork, I did read where they wanted to try to come up with an escape lane in these drive-throughs. I don't see how that's been accomplished with what you have there presently.
So in this instance, for the eastern drive-through lane, we have the bypass lane along the east property line.
Is that, is that curbing, though? Raised curbing in that area that it's showing on this map, or no?
The larger part will be curved, yes, landscaping is curved. The, this proposed user would likely be the pickup window only. In other words, they're going there because they know their order is ready.
Okay.
Such that what, they will go in there because they know they are picking up their order. It's not getting into a queue and going, well, I'm not waiting any longer to place my order, I'm getting out. Because they've already placed their order. So it's, my point is, it's a, it's a different concept. It's not, it's not a drive-through, it's a pickup window, okay? Up on the, up on this end, we have the two lanes in, but we've rotated the existing median that was there for the current drive-through, that median extensive building. We're removing this portion of it, such that, again, if you get in here before the order kiosk, you would be able to bail out and get into the through-traffic lanes to the north.
For some reason, the way it's depicted just doesn't, doesn't seem possible, but I'll take your word for it. All right. Mechanical-wise, inside, you've got an awful lot of, you've got to virtually gut this entire space, correct?
Yep.
And I don't recall if this is a wood frame structure on the top or not.
I don't know that answer myself.
All right. But you've got the mechanicals, the sprinklers are still in, going to be in place?
Yes, yep.
And everything's coming through the central room, so to speak?
Yeah, the mechanical room is located in this corner here.
All right.
Okay, and the existing water line comes in off of Chilai Avenue, comes in there, it's metered in backflow, has the. Backflow protection. And then it's split to its domestic service and then the sprinkler system and then the FDC connection.
Does it presently have a backflow perimeter, or do you still have to submit for that?
We will submit for a new one, yes. Yep.
That's all I got.
You said it was going to be a master backflow?
Yes.
Individual master?
It'll be a master backflow for the, the existing service that comes in. That's the way the Water Authority and the Health Department will, will want it done.
That we locate it internally?
Yes.
On hotlines?
Correct, yep. Yeah, it's in the northeast corner of the building.
The mechanical room.
The mechanical room, yep. Yep.
All right, that's all I got right now.
Where the dumpsters located, I think that's below Chilai Avenue by ten, fifteen feet, maybe, twenty feet?
Twelve feet.
Twelve feet, okay. And it's behind a small retaining wall, correct?
Correct.
That's going to be masonry to match the brick of the building?
Yes.
Okay. I know you have a lot of landscaping in the islands, but you're taking out landscaping along Chilai Avenue-Paul Road area, other than around the signs. So one of the things we looked at was to have some more landscaping in there. I don't, I know you don't want to block the building, we don't want you to block the building, but people are going to be looking at the top of the dumpster and the back of it, so I think there should be landscaping around that dumpster. They're also going to be looking down at the drive-thru here, so I believe there should be some landscaping along that top. And the entire project, well, you need one percent of the project cost needs to be in landscaping. So I think you could find a lot of spots for landscaping, even along the retaining wall, although that's probably a lot less going to do much of anything on Paul Road. Have you sent this to the Conservation Committee or Landscape Plan? Do you have a licensed architect landscape plan that you've submitted?
Yes, that was, yes.
Okay, so what we have in the islands is it, right?
That's what we submitted, yes.
Okay. So I'd like to see more landscaping along the front edge of this building. And I think it should go to our Conservation Committee to have them take a look at it, to review what you're putting in.
Did they look at it on the first of July?
They did.
Okay.
So if you could send that to them, we'd get their recommendation as well. And then the protection for the outdoor dining, I know you have a decorative aluminum fence. Is there any other protection so people can't drive up into that dining area?
It is, it's race-curred, so it would be a six-inch real concrete.
So that's it?
Yeah.
So is there room to put some planters even around there, or something that would block a vehicle? Like, every outdoor dining area we've had so far, we've required some sort of bollards or protection to people that are sitting in the dining area from a vehicle that either by accident or intentionally drives into that area.
Yeah, I think we can look at doing planters.
Something big enough to stop a vehicle, a curb's not going to stop a vehicle.
Big concrete.
Right. Yeah, even sometimes they put them around the bollard, so you don't see the bollard, but there's a planting around it. Something to protect the area so the vehicle can't drive up in there. And then delivery points, multiple deliveries all day, restaurants, it's multiple vendors. How are you going to handle deliveries and where are they? Because all the loading docks have been removed.
So the deliveries don't require loading docks?
No, but someplace to deliver, right?
Well, I mean, the part being that.
I know, I know they don't, but that's where they used to get it, so.
Right, but the point being, with the users here, they don't, they don't require them to, if I were able to remove them. So it'd be a delivery operation that's very similar to these types of uses if they were standalone. These were five individual tenant spaces in the fact that whatever is the vehicle of choice that is, that the delivery's being made, will use the access routes and park in the access routes to make their deliveries. But it's also why we've ensured we have the four-sided circulation patterns. Deliveries are timed by the individual operators based on their, their operations, but the deliveries will be contained onsite.
So for each of these tenants, they would bring their deliveries through the front doors? With Panera, I don't see, I don't see any side door or Panera?
Yeah.
Would that be through the front door or front?
Yeah, I mean, some of these spaces, there will be auxiliary doors in some of these spaces, but for these primary retail tenants, it would be through the front door.
Okay. So when you say access, it'll pull up, park a, park a driving lane or, or pull up into the parking spots, correct? Any idea what size of trucks they deliver, or can they control that, so that we don't?
I can't necessarily answer that, except from the, except from the standpoint of, it's how many times they want to get deliveries, you know, part of it is, and how much they can store also. So they base that on their own operations, how quickly they're turning product over or whatever. But also, our experience working with, with tenants like this, is they size the truck to also what the site can accommodate.
And where you see the drive-up where they're just picking up, isn't that an order kiosk? Is there indoor dining there?
Yes.
Okay. No outdoor dining, though, correct? It's just the one atop the Panera there?
No, there's two patios, the.
Oh, that is, that one in the back there is for dining as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so you'd, same treatment back there as you, I thought there was just one, okay.
Yes, yep.
All right. I don't think I, and I, and I think I'll disagree, I don't think this is a type-two action. You're rehabilitating a building, you're remodeling it completely to change the type of use that was in there.
Correct.
And you're also getting a special use permit in order to use it.
Correct.
So.
However.
I'd love to have an opinion from our side table on that before we do seeker.
I have my type-two list in red.
Go ahead. So there's both indoor and outdoor dining in both of the restaurant?
Yes.
And then in the patio areas, besides the aluminum fence, is there any awnings or vertical protection from our tropical climate?
So that it's seasonal use.
Okay. Good.
Are you looking at putting up any type of monument sign, directory sign, plaza sign, up on top of the hill, on any, any place?
What the intent is, there's an existing monument sign today, is that that base will be retained, and it'll be part of the site package that will come in, or sign package, excuse me, that comes in, is that will be reconfigured to be a multi-tenant.
Okay.
But it'll be on that same base that's there today.
That'll all be going to zoning?
Say that again?
Will that all be going to zoning?
I'm sorry, didn't catch it.
The sign, monument sign?
Yes.
Can we do that, rework that?
Yes. Any changes to sign that's already there would go in front of?
Yep.
To make sure, well, it'd have to meet the town code.
Yes.
Or you'd have to go to zoning.
We'll start with the town.
Right. If it goes to the town code, then it wouldn't have to go to zoning. Right. Anything else from the side table before we open public comment? Yes?
Just, so the southeastern tenant doesn't have a kiosk, right?
At this time, correct.
And if it did, it would all come part of the sign package, right?
Correct.
I need a breakdown of the cost of the plantings, the cost of construction.
Mm-hmm.
And when you do that, please include your planters that they've now requested, because that will count as part of your landscaping.
Right.
Where is provisions made for storage of the exterior furniture?
I don't have that.
Something to ask your tenants.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah, because I don't have that answer.
When.
Go ahead, Matt. Sometimes they'll remove the furniture off sites and rent storage units.
Fine, okay. Yeah, I just don't want it stacked up next to the.
It's real, it'd be walkway.
To the chairman's point about the dumpster enclosure, right now, I believe there's a wrought iron fence on top of the retaining wall.
Mm-hmm.
So the retaining wall, or the dumpster enclosure, would be probably taller than the retaining wall, correct?
I think it's slightly this, because it'll be a six-foot enclosure.
So you terminate the wrought iron into the dumpster enclosure, is that the intent?
I'll have to look at that.
I don't. Possibly just for landscape screening, as he suggested?
Yeah, so that, yeah, here's the fencing here.
Yep.
Yeah, so we, I think what we will do is just what's been suggested about landscaping around that fencing. And so we'll look at what we have to do with that fencing as it relates to the enclosure. We weren't really thinking of changing that fencing at all, because the enclosure wasn't going to come off of the retaining wall, there were going to be two separate elements. We don't propose disturbing the retaining wall at all, so we just thought the wall would stay with the fencing, and then the enclosure would just.
But you're going to use the wall and the fencing as the back end, in essence, of your dumpster enclosure? Or you're going to build a new back end?
We were going to put a new back end, and we were going to include two separate elements, because we didn't want to disturb the integrity of the wall that's there.
Okay.
And that even includes somebody ramming a dumpster against it, you know? So that's what I said, there are two distinct. So that's what I said, there are two distinctly different elements.
Okay, okay. Really clear from the drawing. Can you explain the snow storage pattern on this?
It would primarily be, is, is the snow storage would just be pushing it off of the ends of the parking lot to the north and to the west. We can't do anything east because of the gray changes in the fencing and guy rail that's there.
Won't be doing anything to the north either because, remember, it's a five-foot retaining wall.
Yes, correct, I'm sorry, yes.
So that leaves you west and south. Something to consider there, a plan for that should be considered.
What was previously done with the Walgreens?
Question. It's been so long since Walgreens was there.
What was that, what was the question?
I don't think I can remember.
What did Walgreens do?
What was previously done when Walgreens was there?
From a snow storage standpoint?
For a snow storage standpoint, for life, I mean...
Typically, through their property management company, you know, we figure it out. And then we'll typically find a purpose from the door. As most people do, the parking spot, you know, convenient area that allows for proper range. And we'll use, we'll use the snow storage in that location. It's hard to predict today, but we certainly will act it when we're in the property management company. So we can remove the snow from the site because there isn't an appropriate storage. We will do that too. But I'll ask the former property owner if they remember what the snow storage.
Captain Alatic, I can't remember what he did.
We're using it differently anyway, so we'll be different planning.
You done?
Yeah, why, did you have something?
I had something, yes. Okay, then. He's writing.
I have a couple of comments. For the, near the dumpster enclosure area, since you know you're changing to a masonry instead of the board-on-board, please pay attention to where, how it's going to affect that catch basin? Because the masonry is going to block the flow to that catch basin. So you may need to extend, extend one, put one on the other side of the dumpster enclosure.
Yep, we've talked about that in our office, whether it's an extension of the inlet that's in here up to here, or we actually may do a carve-out in the bottom of the structure here to allow the water to flow in there. We're checking our spot elevations there, just, that'll be the best solution.
Yeah, personally, I recommend extending it because if, if you just have an opening inside the dumpster enclosure and it gets clogged for any reason, whether it's snow or other degree that clogs up the opening, then your, the flow won't be able to reach the catch basin. To one of the board members' comments regarding the northern parking across, to make that usable, would seem that you're going to need to put some type of a sidewalk or crossing across the landscaped area so that when they're trying to, rather than having, walking around the end of that landscaped area in the driving aisles, so that they can walk directly across it and across the striped area to the sidewalk in front of the building.
At this location here you're talking about?
Yes. Okay, so you have the, you have the raised landscaped area. But I would foresee that you would need to provide a sidewalk across that through the, through the center of the landscaping to enable those people to safely cross or they're not walking around the end of it in the driveline?
Yeah, the, well, we're going to want to look at that because of the fact is, is we have the fencing there.
That fencing can't stay there.
Pardon?
That fencing can't stay there at the end of that sidewalk. It's to make, it makes it too dangerous for people to walk around everything.
But that's my point, because we don't want people coming out of the food service and taking a hard right into the drive-through aisle. That fencing there is, for lack of better ways, to contain people off of the drive-through aisle.
Well, you've got to do something because otherwise that northern parking area is going to be basically useless. Or it's going to be a very, it's going to be a very dangerous area to walk from.
The thought was, was the fact that that likely would be where the employees would park. For the multi-tenants, because there will be a number of employees there with the five tenants and that that would be employee parking and the customer parking would be in the dual-access space that have the designated crossings, pedestrian crossings, but also leading them to the sidewalk system that is located around the perimeter of this.
Regardless of whether it's customer or employee parking, it still needs to have safe, safe access to the building?
So the other thing I would propose, we consider is the fencing would be encompassed on the patio and we still maintain a sidewalk across the front.
Yeah.
And then that would remain as it was currently with the crosswalk being across the drive-through.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you need to have a crosswalk across the drive, the drive-through and some, and a place, place to cross the planter, because they're going to do it, they're going to do it anyhow. Whether you, whether you actually plan for it and put something in or people just walk across it and create a path anyhow.
Your point, what I might think the most satisfying or happy to accommodate is we'll, we'll take the patio area in front of the allegedly Panera, right? We'll return it to itself, so there'll still be a crosswalk and a pedestrian lane across the front of the storefronts, across the drive-through. We'll do a crosswalk in a little time, so they, you know, typically when you pick up your food, you look up before you drive typically.
Theory.
And then we'll do that across to get to the, the ballpark, as it was like for Walgreens. I think they did have a crosswalk.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I was trying to get at, yes.
That's a good solution. Is that, I know there were comments about the board having a fence there.
Right, so the private, yeah.
I think we're all saying the same thing, if I just need to drive.
Exactly. Basically, we've got to get a pedestrian crossing from that north lot to that corner of the...
It's going to be a place in order, you say, as you go state.
You can drive for me.
There you go. This guy will close off.
He's going to pull ahead, right?
One last, one comment about your landscaping in these raised areas. Okay, at the ends where the cars exit the drive-through areas, you currently have specified a fragrant sumac. And I was looking it up, that can grow five to 10 feet tall. There is a dwarf version of it. And any plantings that are there at the exits of the drive, the drive-through lane can't be any, any higher than three feet tall.
Okay.
So there is a dwarf version of that fragrant sumac that you can get, but that needs to be specified in the planting materials to use a dwarf version because we want to make sure that anybody's exiting, they don't have any plantings blocking their view when they're trying to pull out.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Anything else? Yes, sir.
Explain to me the emergency egress of the northern order map. So what you're saying is?
In here?
Yeah, my concern...
Move, can you put it outside?
My concern be is that the interior order or customer, if they had to get out for some reason, the outside guy's going to block them in. So would shortening the island up and allowing for a more striped area be something to consider?
We, we've discussed that because it definitely can be done. It was just a function of, obviously, but based on other conversations we've had this evening of where we can pay up additional landscaping, I think that is the logical way to do it, is to strike that.
And we'll just comment that the statistics of that user on that pickup, what do you call it, full lane, will not exceed two cars for more than 15 minutes a day on a Saturday.
Do you want the southeastman?
I'm on the, I'm on the south, I'm on the non-kiosk.
Yeah, that's the southeast.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, that's... So basically, that this, this here, right, this area here, this stripe, right? Yeah, yeah, right now we don't have, it's not, it's not a median, it's not a voting median, so you will strike it.
Invariably, somebody's going to order at that outside of the kiosk, pull ahead to try and be the next guy in line, right? And he's blocked. There's just no easy way out.
Yeah.
Kind of McDonald's kind of has a similarity here.
If you visit the McDonald's down here, I believe you can pull up. Sometimes you have to wait for things and you will drive right past them.
Going the outside, yeah.
It's too lame.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of regarding the existing landscaping that's there. Along Paul Road where that retaining wall is, between the parking lot and the retaining wall, the existing landscaping there has really gone wild and everything. So if you're doing a landscape plan, if you're out, just do that. Therefore, the landscaping plan, I appreciate it.
And you're referring to?
Yeah.
Kind of elevated up high anyway, so it's a good opportunity.
You all set, Paul?
Yeah, I've caused enough trouble.
You caused more. This time I'll open the public hearing portion of the application. Anybody from the audience like to be heard? Yes, sir. Could you state your name and your address?
My name is Adam Zaluga. I reside at 3034 Challey Avenue, property directly across from Walgreens. And I support the redevelopment and improvement. I just have questions about the driveway, also the landscaping.
Could you talk into the microphone so we can hear, please?
Landscaping directly in front of my house that I look out my kitchen window onto. There's two benches there. One of them has been collapsed for quite some time. And just wondering what the redevelopment plan would be for those.
Okay. Any other questions, hang on a minute, any other questions before we hear any of the statements?
My concern is traffic.
Okay. All right, thank you. Would anybody else like to be heard? Okay, this time I'd make a motion to close the public hearing portion of the...
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Peter, could you answer if those benches are part of this property or are they owned by somebody else? Right along Challey Avenue, I think.
Yeah, they're not part of, they're not part of the Walgreens property, they think they're...
Was the house that we were talking about?
No, directly across, if you look at the...
On this side?
Yes. Yeah, why don't you go ahead and do that? Right, it's right, right across from the, right.
Straight here, right, you can see it on this side.
Yeah, so right in this area here, there are two concrete benches that, one has collapsed and just doesn't look great.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
So I get you know that was part of this property.
We don't own it yet.
They were placed by Walgreens.
I knew it was not your fault now. We'll take a look at it and if one was actually just recently collapsed, we'll be sitting there. So my concern is... Yeah, so they're not...
Okay, I think what you're looking for is to remove them?
Yeah, or just do something.
All right, thank you, all right. All right, we'll work with them to do that. I just heard from one of the other planning board members that Walgreens, they believe, put them there. So it's probably part of your property or part of the development that went in there. And I think that's what we would want is to have them removed. I'm not sure why they're even there, but to remove them and clean that area up. Thank you.
The man I just wanted to know about the flow of traffic. I know that applies out right there.
Sorry, here you go.
But if this doesn't apply, it's not two lanes right at the entrance active on the track.
So this is going to be one-way heading this way?
Okay. Then you will be able to circulate the site this way and look two-way on these three. So that'll answer your questions for how the site circulates.
So the driveway on Challey Avenue is entrance and exit. Turn right or left, left or right. And then the exit on Paul Road is right or, right only or, right only out, left, right only in?
Right, there's no changes proposed in the access.
Correct.
Turning left? I think what they probably do is turn right here and make a left at a light. That'll be my movement as I use this, but I don't think here is going to be enough of a difference. The light to protect you, and this is red, that'll allow for a left to save.
Right, because it's not a...
You've been there, so I don't know.
I just worked on tracking back.
Yeah, I did on my driveway eventually. Yeah, I don't, I don't think this is going to impede your access in and out. It'll be a long stack. And then I think if this does, the stack up, you do have another way out, that's not that long in my opinion. If anything does happen, call them.
Yes.
Additional board discussion, I think a few things were brought up. We got to look at what this bypass drive-through is going to look like. We got to look at the landscape recommendation from the Conservation Committee, the protection of the outdoor dining, the dumpster enclosure, and then this pedestrian crossing. I'm still a little confused how that's going to work safely, quite honestly. So I'd like to see that on paper because when you walk from that building or anywhere up in the north, you basically have to walk across the driveway, around that island, across the drive-through and around the dining area and then in. So we'd love to see what that's going to look like on paper to see what that, how safe that's going to be. And what other items came up that we wanted to look, drive-through island, landscaping, wild overgrowth? Were there, were there any other items that we want to see addressed? Another, A C had some items, but they were mostly addressed, you were just going to have a follow-up, correct?
Yeah, note 17 on there, I finally tracked that down, Peter. I see that now. So you're, we're covered because it's on there about the signage package.
Oh, got it, all right, all right. Any other discussion or comments? So this is for two things, preliminary site plan and the special use for the outdoor dining. We would do two separate votes on them, but once I hear from Matt, we'll decide the seeker for the special use.
I think it depends if the board thinks that it's a substantial enough change. I mean, I...
I think it is, myself, so I think we should do Seeker.
Yeah, and we did provide the short form E A L.
You did. I know, I've read it.
We hedged our bets.
Okay. All right. Any other further board discussion? Anything else from the side table? Do you have a start, a start date?
Yeah, we, we hope to acquire the property within 90 days and, you know, pending a successful site approval. We still have to acquire the property, do our building plans, what's up in, you know, end of the year. We'd like to get, because it's already an existing building, so we could work through winter on the inside and start to do some significant improvement. So this year, we're hopeful.
What's the planned construction term? How long before you're ready to open?
I think mostly we're looking at a Q1 '25 or Q2 '25 opening. Depends on the site work impact, your drive-throughs, kiosks, it might take longer. So processes internally will go longer than others. You know, one user needs to go through a committee and get approval, you know, so that might take 60 days, international tenants, so it's not a, it's a slow move. I think everyone, at the pace we're on, will be open by Q2 '25. We know later than that, we should be fully operational.
So you're going to start and complete? You have, as soon as it's done, you're going to complete the project and get it moving, get it opened?
Yeah, we're going to update our technical building plans. That's probably a 60-day process from site plan approval and then work. 60-day process from site plan approval, and then we're, you know, full, we already have a contract now for it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions? So as far as seeker, they did the traffic, anybody have any problems with that traffic study, the impact study? I read that, I think that looked good. All right, the landscaping will come in, it sounds like they've addressed all the other, will be addressing the other engineering issues, you don't have any issues with that? Okay. I'll make a motion to declare the board lead agency as far as seeker, and based on evidence and information presented at this meeting, determine the application made on listed action with no significant environment impact. Do I have a second on it, seeker?
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Let's start with the special use permit. So for the special use permit, the conditions that I have listed are the town engineer and the commissioner of public works must be given copies of any correspondence with other approving agencies, pending approval of the zoning board of appeals for all required variances, applicant to comply with all conditions, all conditions of the zoning board of appeals as applicable, any signage change should comply with the town code, including obtaining sound permits, sign permits. Any other conditions for the special use permit? All right, with those conditions, the application of Roundy Tree LLC, 1657 East Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14610, the applicant Rochester W L L C, 355 Third Avenue, 28th floor, New York, 10017, owner, for a special use permit to allow outdoor dining space to the property located at 3127 Challey Avenue, the former Walgreens. Second?
Second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes for the special use permit. Conditions for the preliminary site plan approval, let's see, if the approval is subject to final approval of the town engineer and the commissioner, commissioner of public works, town engineer and the commissioner of public works must be given copies of any correspondence with other approving agencies. Paul, there is an easement for the drainage, correct, to the right? Do we have an easement for that, the town?
Yes.
Okay. Copies of all easements associated with this project shall be provided to the assistant town council for approval, and all filing information, i.e. library and page number, shall be noted on the MyLars. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, all easements are to be filed and recorded with the Monroe County Clerk, and filed, recorded, and acknowledged by the town of Challey Clerk. Applicant to comply with all pertinent Monroe County Development Review Committee comments. Applicant to comply with all required life safety conditions and permits from the town fire marshal. Paul, any zoning board of appeals for this? I think for the property, they were already granted for the front parking, et cetera, et cetera, in the past? Okay, so that doesn't, preliminary site plan does not need to go to zoning, correct?
Until I see a signed package.
We can make that a condition at final then, correct? If we need to? All right. Any signage change shall comply with the town code, including obtaining sound permits, sign permits. The applicant shall supply a landscape plan drawn by a licensed landscape architect, along with the required checklist to the conservation board for review and recommendation. The applicant shall provide landscaping equivalent to 1% of the total project cost. Upon completion of the project, the applicant shall submit a landscape certificate of compliance to the building department from the landscape architect certifying that all approved plantings have been furnished and installed in substantial conformance with the approved landscape plan. Planning board affirms the recommendation of the architectural advisory committee and requests that the applicant comply with those recommendations. Building permits shall not be issued prior to the applicant complying with all conditions. Application is subject to all required permits, inspections, code compliance regulations, no outdoor storage is allowed. Are there any other conditions? Yes?
They landed a commission of public works, as I outlined in my deal, and asked if they provide a inspection report for the existing stormwater management pond and the, and the storm sewers. So if you come in, possibly with that condition, that they provide that report.
Sure. Retention panel, did you say, in storm sewers?
Yeah, it's called a stormwater pond inspection report.
It still has the capacity, that the, the old structure is still in good condition, functional, storm sewer is a bit cleaned out and functioning. Also, there's a hydrodynamic pretreatment system, according to Dave, that's on site, so that needs to be inspected and cleaned up, make sure it's still functioning.
Provide the, provide an inspection report for the stormwater management system and associated sewers, including design capacity is still sufficient as designed, the hydrodynamic system must be cleaned and determined to be functional. Does that cover what Dave was looking for?
That's the gist.
All right. Which you'll need to approve before this goes anywhere, correct? Okay. I'll add that condition, any other conditions? With those conditions listed, the application of Roundy Tree Third LLC, rounding Third LLC, 1657 East Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14610, the applicant Rochester W L L C, 655 Third Avenue, 28th floor, New York, 10017, owner, for a preliminary site plan approval to convert the existing building to a multi-tenant space located at 3127 Challey Avenue, the former Walgreens in a G B district.
Sog.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes, it's approved for preliminary and special use. I'll sit.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The first, the first application on the public hearings, the application of Schultz Associates PC, 129 South Union Street, Spenceport, New York, 14559, applicant Effortless Real Estate LLC, 1440 Scottsville Road, New York, 14624, owner, for a preliminary site plan approval to erect a walk-in cooler, property located at 1440 Scottsville Road in the G B district. The applicant has requested a disbytable for a future meeting, so that applicant will not be heard tonight. Any other business before the board? Approval of last month's meeting minutes? Do I have a second for the approval of last month's meeting?
Sog.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes, any other business before the board? Meeting is adjourned.